Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And, we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. (508) 548-7303. Or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including Mega Backup Cloud Service, Server Colocation, T1, Fiber, Metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as Hosted PBX and Digital Voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction, maintenance, to site work for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs. (508) 548-0911.
Main Street Gallery and Real Estate. A family-run art gallery and real estate agency located on Main Street in Falmouth focusing on local and regional fine art. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate. (774) 763-5441.
The attorneys at Oppenheim &amp; Nickerson LLP have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration. (508) 548-8255.
Barrett Plumbing and Heating offers expert plumbing, heating, and air conditioning services to all our residential and commercial customers on Cape Cod and surrounding area. We are a full-service plumbing specialist offering professional workmanship to suit your budget. Whatever your heating or plumbing need, you can always count on a job that's done right.
Hamilton Tree and Landscaping has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Located on Route 151, we're available for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
At A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving. (508) 540-4944.
Calfee Insurance. Offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. (508) 540-2601, and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
BSS Design has been providing civil engineering, land surveying, and permitting services throughout Cape Cod and southeastern Massachusetts since 1987. BSS Design. (508) 540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street Downtown Falmouth.
Eastman's has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913. With a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessories and gourmet foods. Our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs. (508) 548-0407.
Carpet Barn. Carpet One Home Showcase. A local family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry. Serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Simply Hearing. Audiology and hearing aid center. (508) 548-8123. SimplyHearing.net.
Grossi Septic Solutions. (508) 548-7500.
J. Miller Pictureframer. 681 Falmouth Road. (508) 539-3888.
The Annie Hart Cool Team. (508) 868-0664.
Dalpi Excavation Incorporated. (508) 548-9788. Info@dalpiexcavation.com.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop. (508) 274-2057.
Nobbska Lighthouse and Maritime Museum. FriendsOfNobbska.org.
People for Cats. 44 Beagle Lane. T-Ticket Mass. (508) 540-5654. Info@peopleforcats.org.
Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank. In Falmouth and Woods Hole. (508) 627-4266.
The Falmouth EDIC. FalmouthEDIC.org. (508) 548-7440.
Partners Technology. Voice and data solutions. (781) 930-5000.
Wacoite Congregational Church. (508) 548-5269.
Soares Flower Garden Nursery. (508) 548-5288.
M. Duffney Builders. (508) 540-3625.
Danny's Barber Shop. (508) 548-6013.
David Rogers Electric. (508) 274-2057.
Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance. (1-800) 800-8990.
Chapman Funerals and Cremations. (508) 540-4172.
Hanush Jewelers in Downtown Falmouth. (508) 548-9107.
Mahoney's Garden Center. (508) 548-4842.
The Cape Cod Five. (508) 457-5252.
And Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More. (508) 457-9454.
Additional support provided by...
Stop &amp; Shop. Windfall.
All non-Town Meeting members should be in the balcony. We do have a microphone up in the balcony for those that want to speak. Okay, tonight we're going to establish a quorum with the electronic voting devices where we have slowed each slide down. So it will take, so it will take three minutes to do a roll call. And you will only see each precinct twice, okay? So you're going to get 10 seconds on the first round, 10 seconds on the second round, and that will be a total of a three-minute. So when the quorum comes up, if you could press 1A as quick as possible so that you would register green, but more importantly, if you didn't press the button yet, as it goes through, make sure you see your name so that we can be comfortable with the reload of the data of the voter list, the town meeting member list. And if you see someone's name who you know is at home and isn't here, as we had last night, let us know that as well. But it appears that we may have had the upload of the wrong registration list, the sheet, and that's why some of you were on there, some of you weren't, and some folks that weren't with us last night were on there. So we're going to do this over the next three minutes. Please take a look at your precinct. And at the end of the roll call, stand up for a point of order if you have a, if you have something. We have a point of order before we start. With a microphone down to the center, please. He's going to bring you the mic.
This is just a suggestion that people may not be aware of the fact that the slides, these precinct slides have been changed so that they're now alphabetical by row rather than arranged in columns for year of election. So people looking for their name will not find it where it was yesterday.
They've always been alphabetical by row.
No, sir.
It's a different year, but the format is the same.
My name isn't where it was yesterday, and I doubt I'm the only one.
That's because it was a different year and there were other names that were moving your name into a different box. That's why. It should have been where it would have been in the previous town meeting. Okay, so let's establish the quorum. We'll load the slides.
Mr. Moderator, Deborah Siegel, Precinct 6. A lot of people are saying, including me being an old person, that it's still, we can't read it. I'm hearing that all around me.
Okay. Can someone dim the house lights for this roll call? I don't know if we have somebody on a light panel, but yeah, I don't know. I don't think we have lighting people. If we leave it like this, it'll be a quick town meeting. I won't see anybody's hand up.
So there's on and off, that's all we've got.
By a counted vote of 181 members, we have a quorum, and I call this annual town meeting back into session. So we can go back up with the lights. I just wanted to make sure that, thank you, that everybody could see that their name was on the list. Any issues with the list? I think we're good. Yeah? Let's do it with them. So they're under the 1936, the 1936 Special Act which created town meeting. Our town meeting actually predates the standard form of representative town meeting form of government. It has any member of the general court who resides in the town of Falmouth as a member at large, and the moderator. So I happen to be lucky enough to hold two of those seats. And then Representative Fernandez also lives in Falmouth, and Senator Moran lives in Falmouth. So there should be, I think, Precinct 5, I think, has another one as well where she's at. It used to be, I used to be in a different precinct, and it moved over to seven. I was in nine and seven, so those are what the three extras are. Okay, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd recognize Peter McConity for the invocation.
Lord, when it comes to meeting and communicating with each other, help us to be good listeners. Help us to be open-minded, putting aside our own agendas. Help us to be honest without being insensitive. Help us to be respectful without being too formal or too artificial. Help us to question and to challenge without being too harsh. Help us to be aware that this is just one moment, just one meeting. And lastly, help us to remember that you too are always meeting and communicating with us. Amen.
At this point, I'd like to do a moment of silence for the innocent men, women, and children that are being slaughtered in the Ukraine by a madman. These families are not part of the battlefield. They're in their homeland, and they're being slaughtered ruthlessly. And at this point, let's dedicate our moment of silence and our solidarity for the Ukrainian people and for those that for no reason are losing their lives. May be seated. I'd like to introduce our new town council, which, she's sitting three to my left. Didn't do that last night, sorry, Ms. O'Keefe. Maura O'Keefe is our new town council. Ms. Lichtenstein, here's a quick announcement of one of our annual events.
Thank you. As many of you know, Louise Hu and I are the bag ladies. We coordinate Falmouth's annual spring town cleanup. And this year, it's going to be April 23rd to May 1st. Are we excited? I want you all excited. Okay. We hope everybody, man, woman, child, golden retriever, get out there, take a walk, and pick up trash. This is not a major planning event. You don't have to schedule time and get a group and all that kind of stuff. Just take a walk, take a bag, take a friend, your dog, your kid, take a total stranger. We don't care. Go down through your neighborhood, through the woods, through the fields, pick up anything that's come out during the winter, and let's make Falmouth a little bit cleaner. We love groups. If you want your church or club or neighborhood group, that's fine. We have dump passes available. And whatever you pick up, you can put out with your regular trash to pick up. If you don't want bags sitting around, if you were really good doobie and got a lot of stuff, we will have the dumpsters again. One on Ranch Road in Hatchville, and one on behind Smitty's on 28. Household trash not in there, please. This is not the time to clean out the cellar. This is only for the sidewalks, okay? So let's get it all clean. And I hope the town meeting and all of our elected officials will show the way and at least get out for a few minutes and pick things up. You never know what you can find. One year, in the middle of the woods, Kuna Mesa Reservation, I found a wooden white elephant and a couple of dead televisions. I don't know how they got in there, but I had to get a couple of guys to help me get them out. So if you find something really unusual, send me a picture of it, okay? And the Chamber and Mike have made these beautiful blue bumper stickers that we all remember, Isn't Falmouth Nice? When you see them, I want you to think to yourself, Isn't Falmouth Nice and Clean? Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay, we left off last evening with Article 25. Mr. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move to defense with the reading of the warrant except for the officer's return.
No, no, this is just the motion on Article 25.
Oh, excuse me. Vote Article 25 as printed.
As printed. This is the second vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter a municipal light plant. And we're going to do an opening presentation. This is one of the main reasons why we want to make sure these clickers are working. This requires a two-thirds vote and by secret ballot by statute. So we will utilize the roll call machine, but we will not preserve the individual way that you voted. It will just be the aggregate yes and no's. And council has determined that that is equivalent of us doing a paper secret ballot, so...
All right, good evening. Can you all hear me? I'm Mary Lois Snowman, and I'm the Vice President of Falmouth Net. I'm super happy to be here on the second night of town meeting, mostly because I'm hoping my family gets a chance to see me. Apparently, I was competing with Kansas and North Carolina last night. So I'd like to start with reminding us all that Falmouth is a town of visionaries. In 1973, a group of guys decided to take a run on a rainy August day from one bar to another bar, and someone had the vision to say, this could be a world-class event. Since that time, the nonprofit that is the Falmouth Road Race has generated an economic impact of over $13 million, and since 2012 has donated over $3.7 million to various Falmouth activities and organizations. In that same year, a group of people looked at a 10-mile abandoned rail trail and thought, this could really be something. And thanks to a group of volunteers, together with the town, together with MBL and HOE, a really nice public-private collaboration, town meeting established the Bike Ways Committee, and we have this amazing asset that is the Shining Sea Bike Trail. And there are so many other examples of this private-public collaboration that starts with a volunteer vision and makes Falmouth the wonderful place that it is to live, to work, to raise a family. But sometimes, something happens, some big event, like we experienced during the pandemic, and what we thought was a forward-looking vision becomes a new necessity. And that's where we are with the internet, which is really analogous to electricity today. If you're a senior and you want to stay in your home, the ability to meet with your physicians online, to meet with your family online, to even have like internet-based security services. online, to meet with your family online, to even have like internet-based security systems makes that a reality. If you want young people to stay here, to work here with year-round economies, you should have been at our first community meeting. They were begging for a better internet because it's just not a reality without it. And online learning, for me, was a nightmare during the pandemic. My kids were home from college. They were constantly booted off their exams, off of online learning, and my husband and I just imagined all those tens of thousands of tuition dollars just floating out the window. Unfortunately, it's no longer a nice-to-have, and the promises of the big corporations for our internet are just ephemeral, just floating out the windows. We are on a 1980s infrastructure, and in the summer, when everyone is home and the kids are home, it is constant brownouts. If you don't think that your constituents are concerned about affordable, reliable internet, you've not been paying attention to the Facebook community pages because not a week goes by where someone doesn't ask about it. So that leads me to where we are and who we are, Falmouth Net. We are that visionary advocacy group. Our role is for education and for advocacy. And we have a vision, a vision for a path forward. We researched other communities and what they did, and they were able to develop a muni net with an elected board, a board that hosts, you know, open and transparent meetings, collaborates with other people in the town, with town departments, and is able to bring that forward in an open and collaborative way. Now, I know some of you are about worn out with our advocacy and education group. We heard that loud and clear. We call it hardworking and passionate. And in fact, I was a little bit nervous about coming in front of a live audience considering what happened at the Oscars last week. But my only excuse is that, from the towns that we researched, we heard from them that the monopolies with deep pockets would work really hard to undermine us. So we wanted to prevent that happening here. Which brings me to where we are now, that hard work, which is, we have an opportunity for the voters of Falmouth who are clamoring for this. We have an opportunity for Falmouth to have a voice and a say, to have a community-spirited internet for pricing and for reliability, a community voice. A municipal internet is doable. The MLB will develop the right mix of funding sources. And you can see there are four of them here. Any suggestion that Falmouth will bear the brunt of this on its own and there aren't multiple buckets of funding is just a talking point by the cable lobbyists. The MLB can do this. In fact, there are $40 billion coming to the state of Massachusetts in the latter half of 2022. And the federal government has allocated $80 billion just for broadband, which will be spent over the next few years. So the MLB has quite an exciting road ahead of it. In addition to that, 61% of Falmouth residents in our feasibility study said that they would accept a Comcast alternative. We have an opportunity tonight, an opportunity to develop an internet with a community voice and a community influence. If we do not do this tonight, we have to wait another two years until we can bring this forward. We risk this unprecedented time in history where we have stimulus, and we put Falmouth on the other side of the digital divide for probably another decade. Thank you.
Okay, open for discussion. Okay, Mr. Hargraves.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, you may remember that I was the last to speak after Article 22 in November. And after 175 of us cast our vote for that article, we said we would like to hear some information about what the timing and financials for this project look like. And because we didn't get any information, that was my vision for what I asked for. I did some research, and I found some things that are concerning. And I just want to share them with you for your assessment. So I, okay. Okay. So, first of all, I hope that all of you got the handout and/or read the enterprise and saw Eric Turkington's questions. He had no answers in here, and I don't have answers to these questions. But I have a vision for your understanding of what's being requested here, so you can vote responsibly. And thank you for this, Eric. So, internet over fiber, why not? I want to thank Peter Cook and many others who helped me to put this together. So first, my first question was, what is, you know, an MLP, a municipal corporation? Growing up in the business world, I understood...
You need to speak into the mic, Mr. Hargraves.
Okay, sorry. I apologize. So, growing up in the business world, I understood a corporation as a vessel to contain the business operations and isolate the directors and officers from liability. And furthermore, there were regulations for reporting operations and bylaws and accountability and filings that were required of a corporation by the SEC and others, so the investors could clearly understand what they were signing up for. So, looking into Chapter 164, which we're asked to approve here, it's pretty much a corporation, but there are a lot of differences. And there are over 150 sections. The ones that were concerning to me basically define a municipal light plant as a corporation, but in the public arena, it's exempt from public records and open meetings. They can incur debt and ask the town for help. And the MLB board, the MLP board, has the authority to make contracts, but they can also go to the town and ask for financing. And so, my concern, there's not that accountability. There aren't any reports required when there's an MLB and an MLP. Now, internet broadband over, over, internet broadband service over fiber, you can see there are 331 municipal broadband providers. There are almost 3,000 in the U.S. Most of those are the traditional type of corporation. Half of them are providers with fiber service, and actually, there are 88 municipal broadband providers with fiber service only. So, in, a couple of professors at the University of Pennsylvania wanted to study the performance of municipal fiber networks, but they wanted to look at the financials in isolation of any other town operations. So there were, the 88 with municipal fiber projects, there were only 20 that were operated separately. So, we all understand how the strong sister helps the weak brother in a blended operation where the results are conflated. And we have examples, and I have one at the end in Falmouth, of how this kind of thing can work. But there were 20 that could be looked at in isolation, and their financials analyzed by net present value, which not only accounts for profit and loss, but for paying back the debt, which is an important part of this. And one thing I neglected to say here is the reason MLPs were established is, it was a means to supply essential utilities in unserved towns with no alternative. Back in the day, the turn of the, two centuries ago, when there were no networks for electricity and gas, towns wanted utility. They wanted to be electrified, and they got started on their own by this means. But many of them have, there are only 331 municipal broadband providers, and very few who are operating their own electric plants. So, these professors at Pennsyl, in Pennsylvania, at the University of Pennsylvania, looked at 20 projects in isolation, and they did an NPV calculation. The age of these was from the young side to middle-aged. The analysis was between 210 and 214, so the operations had been in place for seven to 15 years. And you have to understand, at the front end of this project, you need $10 million to start to put it in the ground. And then it takes three to five years to start generating any revenue. So there's a risk at the front end of not having the right analysis and market study to project your earnings so you can pay off your debt. This is the crux of my concern. But what happened here in this analysis of fiber, of internet-only fiber-optic municipal services, they, the answer is only two covered their cost. And these were special cases, where they were serving a small section of a city and businesses only, for instance. But 11 of the 20 had a negative cash flow. Seven out of the nine with a positive cash flow didn't pay out till over 60 years. And in fact, that's twice the useful life of the infrastructure that you're paying for. I'm talking about $60 million worth of infrastructure. And, and so, as if to put the case study on the facts that I presented from a study of empirical data that actually occurred, this is the Braintree Electric Light Department, which sold their operations to Comcast in December of 2021 after 20 years of service. And so, there, Bill Bugecki, the general manager, said that this was a good decision for the residential business customers to get first best-in-class service. I don't work for Comcast. I have no financial interest. But I'm just explaining the news release that was given by the Braintree municipality. They needed to invest millions of dollars in order to renew and refresh their infrastructure. And the only way they could do that in a financially acceptable way was to increase rates to their customers. And they were providing internet only. And in the meanwhile, in 20 years while they were operating the business, before any internet was available in their town, the broadband market had become very competitive. In that day, competitive meant that there were, whether there were services or not, available. In today's world, it means, what's the mix of services that you're actually getting, and what's the distribution technology, and even wireless alternatives, which could obsolete this entire installation? So, is it possible to be successful? Of course it is. There are successful internet-over-fiber operations. And I went to three hours' worth of a webinar that was run by Andrew Butcher, president of the Maine Connectivity Authority. And he had success criteria, and any one of these being violated would...
Yes, and I just texted you because you've been waiving the time limit. It's the lead opposition. It's 10 minutes under the rule. Go ahead.
I will be done within that timeframe. Thank you. And so, these success criteria were the reasons, the absence was, were the reasons why there were bankruptcies and failures. In Burlington, Vermont, for instance, there was an effort to put in fiber internet when they had a well-established cable provider, and it went bankrupt, the fiber internet. And so, one of these can sink it, several can sink it, but if you want a success, you have to have these things present. The goal should be to bring broadband to areas where there is no internet, and not to reduce the cost or get better performance versus Comcast. The best performance any homeowner needs is available on the market today and in Falmouth right now. You just need to seek it. And the people I've heard complain have been trying to run DSL connections, as an example. And competition will defend their business. Comcast has 16,000, sorry, Comcast has 16,710 subscribers. In order for a bond company to consider even funding this...
Okay, Mr. Hargraves, your time has expired.
10?
Yep.
Okay. Can, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. So you can read the rest of the success criteria. I'm sorry about not being more efficient on the delivery, but the bottom line is, as you can see...
Okay, Mr. Clark, you're next on the list.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Clark is next on the list.
Thank you.
Hello, Peter Clark, precinct one. I, I've come to expect that when my electricity goes off, my internet goes off. Why is that? I shouldn't have to accept that. I've come to accept that whenever there's a high volume of phone calls, holidays, crises, summer, my phone calls are delayed or won't go through. So I personally, from my own issues, not just entertainment, not work, sometimes it's security. What is your communication plan with your family in a crisis? What happens to our internet and our phones whenever the power goes off or whenever there's a high volume of use? So I see a need to look at an option. I don't disagree that there are risks. But none of the three articles in front of us commits this town to any money. The three articles allow us to have a way to look at a carefully organized and developed plan and a financial plan to go with it. And I, I really am upset at the notion that the possibility that we might have to commit some money to this should kill it right now before we even have an organized, well-developed plan. So Article 25 is, do we have a problem that needs to be solved? Article 26 is, what's the best way to get that plan developed? And Article 27 is, how quickly do we want to move on it? None of them, except the last one, for $10,000 for a special election, requires any money from this town at all. And I do respect the fact that there's a history and there are problems and there are issues. But I urge us to move ahead, to look at a final plan, well-developed, and then make our decision about what we're ready to commit to. So I urge you to vote in favor of Article 25. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gaylord, did you, did you want to, yeah?
Thank you. Thank you. Art Gaylord, I'm a member of the Board of Falmouth Net. It's hard to know how to respond to all of the statements that Mr. Hargraves meant. But let me start by saying that the main study that he cited has been widely discredited for many years by numerous people in the internet community. You can find articles... No, I'm speaking...
So resident, resident of the town? Under the charter, any citizen, resident, or taxpayer.
So basically, this article has been widely discredited. It's a favorite of the cable lobbyists because it seems to make some points, but it actually...
Peter, you can sit down. I'll put you on the list.
It misstates, it misstates the financials of two of the most successful of the muni operations. As a counter, let me point out that Longmont, Colorado, is an example of a muni network. They had a somewhat slow start, but now have built up in phases. They now have money. And their biggest issue is, how do they spend the excess money that they've been charging from their subscribers? Their idea is that they will lower their rates. They want to cut their rates by about half to the subscribers. When is the last time Comcast or Verizon cut your rates? It's been a long time, if ever. The other aspect of it, Braintree was cited. What was left out is... What was left out is the fact that Braintree was an old cable infrastructure, the same type of infrastructure that we have today in Falmouth. It was hard to upgrade it to fiber, hard to upgrade it to the thing that is exactly what we want to build for the town of Falmouth. That's why they had trouble. That's why they sold their old ancient infrastructure to Comcast. Let them play with it if they want to. Braintree was smart enough to know that they didn't want to keep trying to support this ancient infrastructure. Why should we? But the main point I like to make is that what these articles are about is letting Falmouth go forward, letting Falmouth determine what its broadband future is. Why should we let the letters of lobbyists and old reports determine our future? Shouldn't we be thinking about the needs of our town, the needs of our children, the needs of our grandchildren, and providing them with a good infrastructure? Finally, it was stated that MLPs were only developed in areas where there was no service. That also is not the case. Falmouth in the 1930s voted to form an MLP, established a municipal board, it looked at that as an alternative to the high-priced, unreliable electrical service the town was getting at that time. Depression came, the company they were looking to buy out more than doubled its purchase price, and so it didn't go forward. The town had the option to look at it. They had a group that spent two years studying the problem carefully, and in the end made the recommendation not to proceed. The same thing could happen here. If it turns out that the best thing for Falmouth is not to build a network, then let the board determine it. Let the board bring it in front of this town meeting and ask you what your opinion is. I ask you not to cut it off at this point before it ever gets started. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, Mr. Duffey?
I'm not here.
You're on the list, Peter. This is how it works. I'm not making any new rules. You get on a list, you get to speak. You get excited, write a note down so you'll remember what you want to say, because there's 14 people before you. Mr. Duffey?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, town meeting, Michael Duffey, Precinct 6. We have a business that's over on 28, and we're one of the lucky recipients, if you will, of the Open Cape network, and I thought it might be nice for you to hear from firsthand experience, if you will. They came knocking on the door a few years ago and asked if we would like to be one of the 60 people that they would hook up, just for the reason of understanding what it's like and had that experience. So we did sign up, and I asked my sons about a month after we were on if they noticed a difference. They're a lot more in tune to the speed of things than I am, and I don't mind admitting that. And they're telling me that we're anywhere from 250 to 300 upload speed, and so then along comes the pandemic, okay? So what happens? We all get into Zoom, and we have a team set up in our office through Microsoft, and we found that all of a sudden this communication mode that we're all still in and are going to probably be able to continue to operate remotely is just incredible, okay? We do not have interruptions in our calls. I was on a Zoom today, and one of the speakers, he froze, and that's what you get with your alternatives, if you will. And so I just want to put a real-life story to what this is going to be, because we are on Open Cape. And I can't speak for Open Cape, I don't know what their financials look like and so forth. I understand that our rates have since gone down since we signed up, which is unheard of, and I just want to share that with you, that I just think it's a very positive experience, and I thank the folks for bringing it to us, and let's get this off the ground. We have plenty of time to make the final decisions, but I think it's important that we continue down this path, and I will tell you firsthand experience, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Toby? If you can stand up so they know where to bring the mic.
Linda Toby, Precinct 4. I decided to do a little research into this subject because of our experience a few years ago when we were overwhelmed with information about wind turbines, and it just kind of took on a life of its own. So I did some reading, I looked into some of the information, and this information I'm going to share is from the feasibility report for a community network dated November 16, 2020. Sure. Okay. And on that report, it says that if less than 48% of the residents sign up, the town loses money. That's what's in the report. Since 9% of the homes currently don't have broadband, they would most likely have to get 53% of residents who have internet to sign up to break even. I'm really nervous about the financial piece. Thank you, Peter, for saying what you did about the fact that this part doesn't involve, this is a planning stage, but it just seems like sometimes we go from the planning stage into the financial stage really quickly and doesn't always turn out the way we think it will, we hope it will. Some of the comparables on the report just didn't remind, they didn't seem to be a fair comparison to Falmouth. They compared us to Cook County, Minnesota, which has 6,000 residents and no broadband. They compared us to Isleboro, Maine, which has 350 homes, and the project was paid for by property tax increases. And then there was another comparison to Salisbury, North Carolina, with 33,000 residents. The town was unable to fill their original vision, so they leased the network to a private company. You know, this is a great town, and I get very nervous when people come into our town, lots of new faces, new people, and they overwhelm us with hardcover books, phone calls, lots of, lots of things to kind of convince us that their way is the best way. And maybe it is, but I'd like to be sure of that before we get in over our heads. Thank you.
Joe Neto, Precinct 9. I would hope that this elected body votes for this tonight. It's a tough vote, it's a two-thirds vote, and you're going to hear many people cast doubts as to the functionality of a municipal operation. And I'm here to tell you that it works. I ran one for the town of Wareham for 15 years, and when we filed our transportation report, the results that Dr. Antonucci would give us back from the Board of Education was that the town operated in the top 10% to 15%. And why does a municipal operation work? Because it doesn't have to turn a profit. Mr. Duff... Excuse me. That's one reason, it has to break even. It doesn't have to turn a profit. If you're a businessman without a profit, you don't open the doors the next day. The effectiveness is only as good as the people that you hire, the people that run it, and the public input. If it's a municipal operation, has to answer to its rate payers, the citizens of the town of Falmouth. But a misconception about municipal operation, I want to ask you, before you came here tonight and you washed your hands and brushed your teeth, who'd you buy your water from? Town of Falmouth. Your water department is a municipal operation. When it snowed this winter, who'd you call up to plow up your street? The Department of Public Works. That's your municipal contracting services. Last night, we voted to build a fire station in Hatchville. That's our municipal fire protection. And all along the lines, if you've ever had to call an ambulance, and I have for my family, we have by far the best, most highly-trained people in that ambulance that's manned by the Falmouth Fire Department. And I would hope that we always kept that as a municipal operation and never turned that over to a private entity. If you have children or grandchildren in this pandemic, you saw the importance of communication. My daughter's a teacher, she's trying to teach from home, and as Dr. Clark says, froze up. Her students, the images froze up. This is fiber optic. I think there was a piece in the paper, someone from Woodfool said that the old way was two days to download something, and it got reduced to two hours. The federal government, my son worked for the project under Kewitt, is putting a fiber optic cable around the United States. You know why? Because it's hardwired, it's fiber optic. The Defense Department, it's been about a 10-year project, because that's the importance of fiber optic cable instead of wireless. But those are the misconceptions that a lot of us have about municipal government, again as Dr. Clark mentioned. Voting for these, except for $10,000, gives people the opportunity to put this in front of us. If you were on Facebook, Fabulous Falmouth, any of those pages, they are overwhelmingly asking us to vote for this. If this was going to be a two-and-a-half-hour question and it was going to go to the polls, I predict it would win overwhelmingly. The younger generation of this town is very adept at this. Some of us have I've a hard time, too, with the computer. It's the speed, it's the reliability. This is a way of life that some of us older folks have got to realize is here now, and it's our job as town meeting members to make sure that the town of Falmouth is prepared for the future.
Okay, Ms. Neto.
Thank you. I hope you support this article. It's a two-thirds vote, please.
Excuse me while I set my timer.
Tell me when you hit start, we'll hit at the same time.
All right, and start. Peter Cook, Precinct 6 captain. I want to start and say, for those who know what my day job is, and promised my boss I wouldn't talk about it, you know that I use fiber optic on a daily basis. I was one of the founding members of Falmouth Net, and I was in the organization for almost two years. I was treasurer of Falmouth Net. I became involved because I was excited to create a local competitor to our existing broadband company Comcast, and I wanted to see it succeed. I was part of the feasibility study process and was involved until just before the construction study. Early on, we were fortunate to have many private donors, including Google Vice President Vince Cerf, giving financially significant donations to Falmouth Net in the tens of thousands of dollars. At the time, the group reached out to potential corporate funders for the project. More than one such funder made it clear that a 16,710 subscriber base, which is Falmouth, was simply too small a market for an investor. The corporate funders recommended the Falmouth Network with other towns to create a larger regional network that would connect to Open Cape. This, they suggested, would make the project more fundable. At this point, my expectation was that donated funds would be used to develop a financial plan by hiring a business consultant. There seemed to be some thought of grant-based project or a public-private partnership with the town, but financial conversation stopped at that point, and it was then that I left the board. I was dismayed to watch from the sidelines as the board decided to use a great deal of the contributions they received to buy full-page color advertisements in the Falmouth Enterprise, a social media campaign on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and others, and a book about fiber optic systems for every town meeting member, and several targeted town meeting member direct mail pieces, all with the intention of handing the project, including the $60 million in financing, over to the town or MLP. I was also dismayed to learn that Falmouth Net board intended to target precinct captains under the mistaken belief that they would tell town meeting members how to vote. This massive PR campaign directed by a professional public relations firm was directed toward you, the town meeting members. The hope by the board was to rally public support so there would be overwhelming demand for the Falmouth Net project. The belief was that without public demand, the town meeting would simply say yes to the project without a need for financial documentation or serious research into available funding sources. Here's the last full-page ad that Falmouth Net ran, which offers links to articles, studies, and financial information. If you click on the financials, you'll find no information about how to fund the project. Instead, you'll simply find the organization's tax forms. No donor list, no business plan, that's it. According to their timeline, printed here in this direct mail from Falmouth Net, Falmouth has had over three years to create a business plan. I remember telling Falmouth Net board that it was important to have this when presenting to town meeting. We expect that. Falmouth Net chose not to create a business plan. The town of Falmouth has major needs in the areas of wastewater, housing, coastal resiliency, fire department projects, to name a few. All of them are critical to literal survival of our town. Many of the projects related to these critical issues are well along in the planning process, and all will cost tens of millions of town dollars in the near future. Right now, Falmouth Net is asking the town to create an entity whose job would entail developing a financial plan, and we already know that corporate funding is not feasible. Falmouth Net has suggested that by grants, we may be available, but no specifics have been shared, and this project would cost over $60 million just for the infrastructure, not including operation of the project, ongoing maintenance, storm damage, veterans to homes. The town administration has said it wants nothing to do with running this endeavor, and we at the town meeting should be equally skeptical to approving these articles until we get a clear explanation of a financial viability and timeline of the project. I cannot support these articles, especially given the real...
Mr. Cook, take a look at your watch.
Two seconds. May I have one more minute, please?
The gentleman's requesting an additional minute. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
Aye.
And if it shows that the ayes have it, we have one more minute.
Thank you. It'll take 30 seconds. I cannot support these articles, especially given the very real needs of our town right now. Falmouth Net needs to come back to the town meeting when they are ready with a detailed, comprehensive business plan. We can't afford to go down the slippery slope into the unknown. Thank you.
Okay, my far left over there, if you could stand for a microphone?
Hi, Dave Chevray, Precinct 5. I work for the federal government in IT, and I'm really familiar with all these technologies. First, I wanted to say, when you lose power, your internet goes out because cable modems and routers need electricity. Usually, if you have a generator, you can get going. So someone over there was asked my question, which was, what percentage of people would need to convert to this ISP to make it not profitable but at least break even? So I was going to ask then, what price points and speeds are you offering or thinking about offering? Yeah, that's all I got.
Go ahead, Mr. Gaylord.
Thank you. Direct response to your questions. One is that it's not just the power in your house that's important. If you have a cable system, there are hundreds of objects throughout the network, in little pedestals and so forth around the town, that also need power. In a fiber optic network, there would only be four such places in the town outside of your home that need power to operate. This is a huge difference in terms of reliability and in terms of power needs. Finally, in terms of price points and so forth, it is not the job of Falmouth Net to determine that. That is something that the MLP board should determine in conjunction with discussions with potential builders and operators. But to mention that point, our estimates are based upon a cost of $70 a month for 1 gigabit service. That could change, because if it's a couple of years before this gets built, then the price points may change. The final thing is, the financial, the pro forma analysis, which was done in the feasibility study, showed a break-even point after... showed a break-even point after five to six years with a take rate of 40%. The study also showed that 61% of the people would be willing to change from Comcast. This isn't just people who don't have Comcast now. This is people who are, people who don't have internet service now. This is people who have Comcast and are willing to change.
Okay, Mr. Potamus.
Jerry Potamus, Precinct 2. I support what Dr. Clark has said and a number of other people, that this is just the first step. We're not obligating any money. In fact, if I understand correctly, we need a two-thirds vote maybe in the spring, and then we need a town-wide majority election. The other thing is, on the slide, it said this MLP or MPL would not be subject to public records, open meeting law. I thought I was advised that it would be. Could council respond to public records and open meeting law? Thank you.
Mr. Duffy.
Frank Duffy, Town Council, with the assistance of a new town council, Mara O'Keefe. The answer is, they are generally subject to the open meeting law and the public records law, except as to trade secrets and other specifically exempted matters.
Okay. Way in the back right in the shadow there. I can't see who it is, but I saw you waving your hand.
Good evening. Jeffrey Broder, Precinct 7. Just one comment before I'd like to make a point is, if you think you've seen Public Relations Campaign, wait till Comcast gets a hold of this. You go any farther, there's going to be more ads and more marketing coming out of Comcast than you can shake a stick at. Just for a little bit of context on the report that Mr. Hargrave mentioned, the study that Mr. Hargrave mentioned, a news release from the University of Pennsylvania on you at all. And I certainly encourage everyone to, I used Verizon to look it up while I sat here. But if you take a look at their executive summary and the report itself, there is a quote from the co-author that says, "This report will allow local leaders to learn from other cities' experiences about the business case for government broadband and the benefits such a project can bring." That's Professor Yoo's co-author, Timothy Feniger. "Some may cite this report," and the emphasis of mine, "as a red flag to communities considering taking the plunge on municipal broadband, but it simply describes the facts about what has happened in communities so far, and the executive summary itself acknowledges no answers about the future." Thank you.
Mr. Donahue.
Bob Donahue, Precinct 3. I have kids, and the kids use internet for TV, for everything, because they have high-speed internet. They happen to live in a surrounding community of Boston, where there is a population that Comcast and other cable providers has said they could make a profit. We are considered a rural community. As being a rural community, we don't qualify. So there is an article by legislature that gives broadband to the communities if they want to do it. Nobody is asking for anything. We're $10,000 to run an election to let the citizens of the town make a decision, when nobody's asking us for a nickel yet, except that $10,000 to run the election. Let's let them have the election. Let's let them come to us with business proposals when they have a committee and the whole deal is really formulated. This is a vision, folks. Not a stamped, this is the way it's going to be, and, you know, Katie by the doors. Looking back to people who have second thoughts about the wind turbines, and I was one who was totally in favor. I walked out of here that night thinking we made the greatest decision in the world. We didn't. So we're taking our lickens now because of it. But this is something, this is the future. You who are my age remember Dick Tracy and the phone watch? We have it today, folks. What, what's it going to be tomorrow? You know, we'll probably have, and I won't see it, but some of you younger guys and ladies will. It'll all be in the air. It'll be around us. It'll be satellites will run this watch on your wrist. So thank you very much. Please vote for it. Give the, all three of these articles. I won't speak again on them. But let's go for the, all three. If they come back with money and there's not a good plan. And also, one last thing. Comcast might go into gear and say, hey, we're going to compete with those people. We'll put fiber in and beat them down. Let them do it.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Douglas Brown. I'd just like to comment that we have an opportunity here, and I hope we don't miss it. We missed some opportunities in the past with some other planning, like in the '30s when we decided that we didn't want to spend $5,000 to start searing. And in the '70s, in the '70s, when we didn't want to partner with the government to start searing. And finally, in the '80s, we had to start doing it because we were mandated to. So I think everybody knows that there's some service could be better on our internet. When I was in Precinct 3 and I was on Shorewood Drive, I didn't really notice it. I thought it was pretty good. In Precinct 9, I noticed I had problems, and it seemed to be a neighborhood problem. And Comcast would come out, and the service tech would check everything, and never could really fix it. And now I'm in Precinct 5, and I noticed that I have this recurring problem that's between 8:30 and 10 o'clock at night. And I understand what it is, because I have stepsons and they're gamers. And when they get on those games, it gets busy, and that's gamer time. And I believe that that's what's happening. When my movie starts doing this, and I'm paying for the highest level of service, and it's just not really there. And that's not even just in the summer. So another thing that I think is important to consider here is, how many home-based businesses could come here and really work effectively? People that have to download and upload really large files could come here and make a home-based business and become permanent year-round residents here. I think that's something that we're missing in this conversation. I heard Ms. Snowman mention at a precinct meeting that she travels up to the Boston area to do her work because she doesn't have the capacity to work at home. I'm surprised you didn't make that point earlier. But I think this is an opportunity that we can possibly take advantage of grant money. And let's just let them come back with a plan. And all we're doing is giving permission to come back to us and tell us what is the option, what could we do? Personally, I think there's some kind of a limited partnership on the part of the town to maintain some kind of control and some kind of say over whether or not we give low-income people a discounted rate. I think that's an option we'll never have with Comcast. Maybe they do it on their own, but I don't know how that works. So I'm really hoping that we can have a chance to at least explore this. So I hope you'll vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Mochley.
Thomas Mochley, Precinct 6. Now, the mask mandates are beginning to go away. Plexiglass barriers are coming down. But there's a lot of aspects of the pandemic that aren't going away. And one of those things is the importance of telecommunication and reliable internet in general for small businesses. Now, this is not just about making your Netflix go faster or even not just about making your Zoom calls more reliable. It's about being, choosing to become the sort of forward-looking community that attracts innovative businesses, that will allow more young people who want to stay here to do so, contributing to our year-round economy. I have a number of friends who moved home once the whole work world went on Zoom. In March of 2020, from DC, from New York, from Boston, all came back to Falmouth, because isn't Falmouth nice? If we do something like this and it's a success, then that will give that opportunity to even more people. Now, what we're doing here today, as Dr. Clark pointed out, is not committing us to anything. And FalmouthNet, I think a lot of us might characterize it, has done an overwhelmingly good job at bringing this issue forward for us to consider. But that is their job. They are an advocacy group. They even put together their own study. But that is not the end-all study. As we're going forward, if we approve these articles, we will have candidates who want to become part of this municipal light board, and they are going to be the ones that come forward to you and come forward to all of the citizens of the town saying, this is how I want this system to run. This is how I think that it should be funded, based on some combination of the different options that Ms. Snowman pointed out. And it's going to be for the voters of the town to decide whose plan they like best to put on the board. And then, after that board is elected, they are going to be the ones, I suspect, will commission their own independent study. And they are going to be the ones who can come back to us and answer the good questions that Mr. Hargraves and Mr. Turkington and others have about exactly how are we going to pay for it, exactly what is going to happen, and exactly how much money the town might have to put in. Today, it's just $10,000 and an opportunity, and I ask you all to support it.
Okay, Ms. Asendor. I'll take the opportunity, since Mr. Mochley just spoke, to congratulate our newest Assistant District Attorney in the Cape and Islands District Attorney Office, Town Meeting Member Thomas Mochley. Congratulations, Thomas. I first met Thomas as being his citizenship counselor when he did his Boy Scout merit badge, the same badge that got me to come to my first town meeting. Ms. Asendor.
Thank you. Martha Asendor, Precinct 6. I'm one of those people who's rarely on the internet. I've never been on Facebook. And yet, I noticed a big difference in my internet speed when my friend Karen Visonett's brother moved in next to me, and I finally had year-round neighbors. I'm on a party line, which I remember from my phone back in the day. But it came even closer to home last month. My older son is married to a Russian woman, and they were in Moscow visiting her family this winter. They had their flight home canceled, and for over a week, we were trying to get them home. I had, at one point, my cellphone on WhatsApp. I had my landline with my credit card company. And I had the internet where the credit card company was sending me a code that the kids had to insert into their ticket in Moscow. There are three international airports there. I was beyond panicked trying to get the kids home. And it took two days. The codes were coming in at eight and a half, nine minutes. And it's a code that's only good for 10 minutes. And I am then yelling it into the phone on WhatsApp. And I'm, finally, after two days, I told the credit card people on the landline, I said, I am not hanging up this phone until we get the code in. And it came four times. I am beyond exhausted and would do anything to get a faster internet. I say, as we have often said in this group, send it to the town for a vote. Thank you. I am way in favor of this.
Okay, Mr. Hargraves.
Thank you. I'll try to, I'll confine my comments to responses to what was raised about my earlier presentation. There is some information that is well-known, however the analysis comes out, that hasn't been presented by the FalmouthNet group. And it might affect your attitude and feelings about this project. Because I think you may know from their analysis that it's a $55 or $60 million project. But those are typically done in $10 million tranches, and it takes three to five years to generate revenue. And so therefore, they have tricks of the trade in order to keep the bond, the revenue suppliers at bay during this period, like raising rates and putting the interest forward. And I have no axe to grind with FalmouthNet, but I guess I'm offended that this basic information that might affect your opinion about this project is not presented to you. I feel like it's deception by omission. So in any case, the people who have so-called discredited the University of Pennsylvania study are all from advocacy groups who are doing exactly what FalmouthNet is doing, which is selling this idea and hoping it takes effect. But I didn't get a chance to really talk about why I didn't think this had a right to succeed. Because as I said, I had no axe to grind with FalmouthNet. I think they're gentle people, intelligent, and I appreciate talking with them. But I think, you know, in the seminar, which included Vice Presidents of Underwriting and COOs of successful fiber internet operations, they said that if there's an established business that already owns the market, we don't have a right to more than 10%. And we don't have a right to succeed financially with less than 30%. That's strictly a break-even. And so there are some basic facts that would really stop you in your tracks on this project. And there's just two other points related to critique of what I brought up and the comment from council. The open meeting law being suspended for trade secrets. When these folks meet, they consider every one of their discussions to be a trade secret because talking about their development and build-out plan is competitive information. So every meeting will be declared a trade-secret meeting. There will be no record, and we won't really know from hearing it in person. And so I guess I am open to new ideas. I was in R&amp;D, and I have patents, and I'm an innovator. But, but I object to the leadership of an idea by marketing puffery and omission of facts that are relevant to the proposition. And, and I just don't want to see us get sucked down a rabbit hole and then have a big bill on our hands because you'll have to spend $10 million and wait five years to see if you can even pay back that first slug. And the last thing related to citing town projects that are successes or failures. You know, the turbines were a financially sound idea. But that, that was a management.
Speak into the mic again, please.
That was a management oversight. And they got bigger turbines, which made more noise and were not acceptable because they weren't what the neighbors agreed to take. And, but financially, they would have generated electricity to pay for themselves in a very nice business. As far as something that looks more like this, with an $11 million bond, we bought the golf club. And ever since, we've been starting to pay that back.
Okay, Mr. Hargraves.
It's been $200,000 a year in the hole, so.
Yep, four minutes.
I'm done.
Okay. Ms. Fenwick, next on the list. You're on the list. This list is bigger than it was when we started. It was $14 million.
I have a PowerPoint. So Fenwick. It's a right-click. Like that.
She's just trying to figure out how to get the thing to work.
Judy Fenwick, Precinct 1. How's the sound level? Judy Fenwick, Precinct 1? I feel like I'm on American Idol. Okay. I'm going to cut out several of my slides. But I wanted to make the point, this is the article we have in front of us for 25, and it talks about the, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 164. So I did some research and went and counted all of the sections in Chapter 164, which is about manufacture and sale of gas and electricity. And there are 267 sections in there. I had a conversation with David Eisenberg this afternoon on several items. He's on the FalmouthNet board. And I did ask him about, are you going to be pulling in all 267 sections? He said. He said, no, only 30 to 40 of them apply to the municipal lighting plant and the municipal light board. And I'll get back to that in a minute. And I'm going to buzz pass these. I just wanted to show you this. I know you can't read this one, but this is one of the sections that's very relevant to the management of the plant, once it's established, and it requires that a manager be hired by the MLB. And these are some of the responsibilities for that manager. So, anyway, that was the site test. This is one of the sections that's very relevant to tonight, and it's specifically about the stipulations on the vote that we took in November, and, I mean, that we took in, yeah, November of 2021, and that we will take again tonight. And if you read the last sentence, there's a little bit of a catch in there, that if the first of the votes is favorable, which it was in November of '21, and the second vote is unfavorable, that no similar vote can come before town meeting, have to have a two-year absence from town meeting. So, this is what I was hoping we would have in a presentation tonight from Falmouth Net. I've attended some of their Zoom sessions, I've read the ads in the paper, I'm a town meeting member, so I've gotten all those newsletters, and I kept waiting and asking. The last Zoom that they offered was Sunday a week ago, and at that point, I think there were only two town meeting members on the Zoom call and three or four members of Falmouth Net. And I asked what their presentation for town meeting was going to look like, and they were still hesitant about whether or not they were going to make one, but they did tonight. But I was hoping, and gave them feedback on things I, as a town meeting member, was looking for. I went and looked at the 216-page feasibility study that was on their website. I read the design report that we all received about a week before town meeting, and I was hoping that the MLB, the Board, would have some sort of entry plan prepared for it by Falmouth Net that would show and discuss operating models, that we might have some sense of that tonight, that we would see something about the business and financing plans that are outlined in the feasibility study, and that if all that happened, that, you know, I could maybe vote for this. But I, during the discussion with Mr. Eisenberg, said that I, he asked if I was going to support this at the end of our conversation. I said, I want to hear the debate, and I want to hear the presentation before I make a decision. I did a little intervention last night by discussing with the moderator and town council, what would happen if we did indefinite postponement on this? And as you see, that was one of the first things that I was thinking about. And of course, I was reminded by town moderator that indefinite postponement equals a no. And I asked him, is there any other way around this so that we could postpone a vote tonight? Because I'm a little concerned, if it goes negative, that we, they have to wait two years to come back, and I know there's this concern about availability of some funding soon. And David actually told me about the potential for something called a subsidiary motion to take no action. But he sent me off to find town council at intermission last night to ask if we could use that. Frank said, well, if David will support it, sure. I came back to David. I got a lot of education last night, and he told me that we could not use it at a town meeting. Is that correct?
Because of a Supreme Judicial Court in 1908. That's correct. I did that research while you were talking to Mr. Duffy.
Right.
This is what we do during the break, by the way, in case you were wondering.
So, I was trying to get us postponed tonight so that they could come back in November of 2022 with more information to assure that we got a positive vote. Not able to do that. And so, my last slide is to quote somebody whose family made a lot of money on technology back in the 1850s. I don't know if you know that the Thoreau family made pencils, and back in the 50s, that was high-tech, 1850s. So, if you have castles, if you've built castles in the air, which I think Falmouth Net has put this wonderful vision in front of us, your work need not be lost. That's where they should be. Now you need to put foundations under them, and I'm still waiting for part of those foundations. So, I'm still not sure I'm going to vote. I want to hear the rest of the debate. Thank you.
Ms. Murphy, next in the back?
Thank you. Carol Murphy, Precinct 9. We're speaking about Comcast tonight, and I don't know if all of you are aware of a program. Mr. Gaylord spoke of Comcast lowering their fees, which this, they don't do, but there is a program called the Affordable Connectivity Program. It's by the federal government, and the Affordable Connectivity Program is an FCC benefit program that helps ensure that households can afford the broadband they need for work, school, health care, and more. The benefit provides a discount of up to $30 per month toward Internet service for eligible households, and up to $75 per month for households qualifying in tribal lands. Eligible households can also receive a one-time discount of up to $100 to purchase a laptop, desktop computer, or tablet from participating providers if they contribute more than $10 and less than $50 toward the purchase price. The Affordable Connectivity Program is limited to one monthly service discount and one device discount per household. This came about in February of 2022, and I would like all of you to look into it because if you have economy Internet, as I do, you will not pay Internet for your Internet service anymore. Thank you.
Ms. Lichtenstein?
Thank you. Les Lichtenstein, Precinct 8. I have supported this from the beginning. I think it's a really good idea. I believe in nothing ventured, nothing gained. But I sometimes wonder about how fast we run and why we do things when we do them. The idea that we have to do this tonight, or we'll have to, we may lose federal grant money. I have this kind of a funny flashback about a high school, and there was a concept that maybe the high school wasn't quite what we wanted, maybe we should just build what we want. And then somebody said, oh, but no, we can get this good, this good money from the state if we fix it up. So, we did something that maybe we really didn't want to do because we were afraid of losing grant money. I'm not sure we should vote because we're afraid of losing grant money. I think we should vote because we feel it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Harris? The gentleman standing in the balcony, do you want to be on the list, or? Okay, I'll put you on the list.
Mary Harris, Precinct 5. A member of the Finance Committee, but I am not speaking as such. When the leaders of our town see an emerging problem like coastal erosion and things, they formed a committee, and we had a Coastal Resiliency Committee. It has met for three years. We asked them to present a report to us on what to do, but we didn't ask them to present a report or a business plan on how we were going to finance it. We should have had a town committee that looked into the problem we have, looking at the future, to say, what's our survivability and attractiveness unless we have high-speed Internet that we have all access to? But we didn't start a town committee. Instead, a group of, small group of volunteers have worked on this themselves. And fortunately, one of them knew somebody from his early days in school who was willing to talk to that person. His name was Vince Surff. He's one of the two inventors of the Internet Protocol System, who put up $55,000. The Falmouth Road Race put up $5,000. One member of the Board of Falmouth Net put up $5,000, and they got three other wealthy individuals to put up money. Altogether, they raised $90,000. They have spent about $50,000 of that, which Peter Cook thinks was erroneously spent, on marketing. But their job was education and advocacy, to try and inform you of why is this so important and how can they do it? They also, as a small group of volunteers, convinced the EDIC to put up some money so they could do a feasibility study for you, and were able to convince our state legislators that they should put up $150,000 to do the engineering study. Because it was done by a small group of volunteers who set themselves up as a nonprofit, you've all been suspicious of them and wondering. You've been putting the cart before the horse here. You're arguing about the business plan when there is no business plan yet. The business plan comes after you establish the municipal board, and those volunteers, also volunteers, are the ones who will develop a business plan. They showed you the four potential sources of money that these members will go look at. A great deal of that could be federal and state money if we get there fast enough, and loads of people are going to go after that federal money while it's still available. But we need this entity in order to approach that end. Another source are going to be the subscribers. Yes, any business plan requires a few years where you've upfronted some money that you've borrowed on. You're going to get to look at that business plan after it's developed. Please vote for all three of the articles that are coming before you. It's essential for our future.
Okay, Ms. Keefe?
Hi, Melissa Keefe, Precinct 4. I'm also a member of the school committee, however, I am not speaking as a member of the school committee. I'm speaking as a mother. So, a couple things. I'm sure that there are many parents here tonight who have tried to educate their children in the last two years at home, whether it was when we were mandated to stay home or because we were home because we weren't feeling well and we had that opportunity to do so. It was no fun for anyone trying to work from home and educate their children and try to get anything done. It was also no fun for the parents who had to leave the home and work outside of the home, and I'm speaking about myself. I was not at home. However, before I fall down that rabbit hole, I like the option of an opportunity, and I think that this is an opportunity tonight. I think that we need to spend a couple $10,000 to give the town the opportunity to vote on it. And I don't feel like we need to feel pressured, like we're running out of time. I think that we need to vote on this based on, nobody likes a monopoly. That's kind of where we're sitting right now with Comcast. Maybe, like Mr. Burtur said, Comcast will come out of nowhere and decide that they're going to do something better. But until they hear us, the people, speak and say, hey, this isn't working, and we're looking at something else, maybe they don't know that. I don't know. Either way, I strongly encourage you to vote for the three articles to help get it to the people of Falmouth, who have been very vocal in favor of this, and thank you.
Mr. Lowell?
Nick Lowell, Precinct 5, and tonight I'm speaking for myself, not my mother. I had three, three points I wanted to bring up. First of all, there's this kind of insinuation that with Google funding this, there's this like dark money, and there's, you know, the people that are involved with Falmouth Net must have either been duped, or you're bribed, or just be, I don't know, you know. And I just, it just seems completely wrong. Yes, they're relatively political novices in the town. Yes, they're doing things very differently than I would have done them, and probably most of us would have done them, but that doesn't mean that they're doing something nefarious. Second point. So, we had a Precinct 5 and 6 meeting on Thursday night. It was a warm and windy night, you may recall, and then we had a squall line blow through. It rained hard. There was some lightning. There was some wind. When I came in to work at the Technology Park, no Internet. We're on Comcast. The whole building had no Internet. That's 10 businesses in my building alone. It was out all day. They didn't get it fixed until 6 o'clock. Why? There was a nearby lightning strike. They said it blew up the little booster box out on the pole, and, you know, so we didn't have it. And thankfully, I didn't have a lot of stuff I had to ship out that day, but it was a big drag. It was a big drag for everybody in the building. Now, why do I bring that up? This is a completely different technology. Fiber optic is much more resilient to lightning strikes. It doesn't use copper conductors to transmit the signals. It's just much less resistant to lightning damage. Probably wouldn't have lost our Internet that day, and hopefully, they would have fixed it faster if somehow we had. Third thing I want to make is, there's kind of this idea that we have the old camel nose coming under the tent, and then if we approve this, then, you know, before we know it, we'll have a $55 million project, and, you know, it just, might as well just give up. But let's think back a little bit about how these things really work. So, in a building project, take the fire station or the senior center, we hire a, we appoint, the select board appoints a building committee. They come up with, working with architects, they come up with a detailed plan and a cost assessment for that. They bring it back to town meeting, and we decide whether we want to do it or not. Last night, we approved a fire station. Couple years ago, we approved a senior center, and along the way, it gets reviewed by the selectmen. It gets reviewed by the Finance Committee. Those are really legitimate checks and balances. Now, you say, oh, but what about the wind turbines? What about the high school? True. You can try to pick bad examples, but we want a good example. Take the ESCO project. Do you remember that project from five or six years ago? Train came in with this proposal. They were going to do all this work, and it included, in this very building, a window replacement project. The number seemed suspiciously low, and the payback in their spreadsheet was a 300-year payback. Finance Committee, we looked at that. We said, this doesn't make sense, and we got that pulled out. That's the same type of thing. The MLB, if it's formed, will have to come here, they'll have to vet their plan through the select board, through the Finance Committee, through town meeting, before we spend a dime. So, I just think we have the control. Let's go ahead. Let's do this. Let's see what the proposal is. If we like it, let's do it. If we don't, hey, we didn't spend a dime. Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, the far right by the camera?
Good evening. Ben Van Mooy, Precinct 2. To me, this is an issue of equity. Internet is essential for everyone, but these high bills from Comcast disproportionately affect the most economically vulnerable folks in this town. So, I think it's incumbent upon this body to explore every option available. There are lots of folks in this town that are just getting by, and so I think we owe it to them to try and find some solutions to make Internet more accessible for everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Smolowicz? So, Connell, I'll put you on the list.
Ronald Smolowicz, Precinct 8. I've been listening to the conversation. I haven't heard anyone here advocate cable over the fiber optics. It seems like there's a general agreement here that fiber optics is better than cable, and I'm not just talking DSL cable, just, not that I know what that means. Okay, so I think that that is a given, and I did look up a little bit about fiber optics, and there are a lot of advantages to it that a lot of people have mentioned here, and it's a technology that's not going to be replaced in the immediate future. I mean, they're spending billions right now running fiber optic cables under the ocean to connect the world. They're not using, you know, Wi-Fi up in the air and satellites. Fiber optics is here to stay, so it's not going to be a technology that's going to be replaced. The improvements in fiber optics are going to be at the, at the ends, the connections at your home and what have you. So, now the question is, how do we get fiber optics in Falmouth? A lot of people are saying, and I don't know if this is valid, but for a community where there's only 16,000 subscribers, that it's not a feasible thing for a private company to do, that we would not expect Comcast on its own to tell us, hey, everybody, we're going to hook up fiber optics for Falmouth. Whether Falmouth should partner with other nearby communities, that's a discussion that could occur later. So, the question is, if we do nothing here, is Comcast, or Verizon, or anybody else going to connect the whole town with fiber optics? No, we know that. But if we move forward, all of a sudden, they might say, hey, we don't want to lose 16,000 customers. They'll probably put a proposal forward, because we're looking for a community network. We're not just looking for a few, few people to be hooked up. We're looking for the whole community to be hooked up. So, if we go forward with this process, we'll have the time to see how the for-profit companies respond, whether they're going to come into the community, whether there'll be proposals for- for combined town systems, or whether having a municipal service similar to a fire department or a water department would serve the entire community better. We'll be able to make that decision at some time in the future. If we vote this down, we go nowhere. We're just stuck with my $425 Comcast bill per month.
Okay. Over here in the center to my right.
Jason Cullinan, Precinct Six. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Falmouth Net volunteers. They have deep roots in this town. Courtney Byrd, the president, has been here since at least 1980, and everybody on that board has the best interests in this town on their minds. I forgot to say I am now a member of the finance committee, although since I just got elected, I think it's pretty easy for me to recuse myself of any finance committee responsibilities. I can summarize the arguments that I've heard tonight against Falmouth Net. We need a business plan, and we need a financial plan. That seems to be the crux of every argument against Falmouth Net that I've seen. And that is exactly what the MLP and the MLB will deliver, and all we need to do is vote to allow them to make that happen. We believe that the plan is suitable, feasible, and acceptable to go forward and to give them an opportunity to present that to this body. Thank you all very much.
Okay, Ms. Oshman.
Patricia Oshman, Princeton Five. I would like to support the passing of the three of them. I would never say no to an opportunity to see what being presented to us and give the town the opportunity to vote on that. Second, I think equity is really important, and for the ones who still think that it's easy to qualify for the Comcast plan, you have to be out of the internet for 90 days, maybe then you qualify. So, yeah, you interrupt your service for 90 days so you can have a cheaper internet. This is absolutely, you know, insulting. That's all. I just want to see an opportunity for us to be presented by a plan, and I've never seen any business become profitable with very rare exceptions if they really did a good business plan in less than two years. Thank you.
Ms. Bregga.
Just briefly, I think folks have articulated it well. This body's not abdicating any control. We're simply opening a door for further investigation. These are really critical needs. I can tell you that, like many of you, you know, I spent the last couple of years, you know, all of court shifted online, so you can imagine trying to have a trial, a divorce trial, over Zoom and in the middle of your, obviously compelling, argument, your screen freezes. And, I mean, this was a regular occurrence, and it happened during our select board meetings when really important matters were in front of us, when folks here that are in this audience tonight were trying to come before the board to present on important issues, they would freeze, we would freeze. And we're, so the pandemic, maybe we're through it, but there'll be, we're going to continue to use technology, and there'll be other opportunities where we're going to continue to use that. Businesses are using it every day. We hear from merchants who in the summer can't process their payments at the peak times because they don't have, you know, it's just so slow. And so these are, these are things that are impacting, you know, regular folks that we want to stay here to keep our economy vibrant. So we talk about young folks, so it's certainly that population, but it's also our established businesses that are really constantly asking for this infrastructure to be improved. So please, I, you know, I just urge that this body, look at this opportunity. We're not giving up control. We will have many, many opportunities to weigh in and to ask tough questions and to demand clear and concise answers.
Okay, in the balcony, Mr. Gessen.
Hello. Hi, Dan Gessen, Precinct One. I want to speak to the fact that, speak to the feasibility study that was brought up earlier today. There's the fact that one number that stood out to me when I was reading that feasibility study is that 97% of people in this town want competition to the current infrastructure and the current providers we have right now. If that number seems a little high, I mean, think about your opinion of the current internet situation in town. Look to your left, look to your right. Trust me, it's 97%. And the reality is, yes, there are a lot of privately funded for-profit corporations out there installing fiber, and with a demand that high of 97%, you'd expect that, why wouldn't they come to Falmouth? Well, let's say we privatized all the water across the country. Yes, sooner or later, they'd come and they'd build out Falmouth, but not before they provided water to every other more densely populated area. What Falmouth need, needs is an advocate to stand up and say that we need this resource, because it's not going to come to us without the people of Falmouth standing up. So voting in favor of this MLP isn't going to devote a single penny towards building fiber in town. It's just going to give the people of Falmouth the right to pick their advocates when it comes to developing this plan, developing a fiber optic network for our town. Let the people of Falmouth pick their advocates, let those advocates come in front of town meeting and propose a plan. If we don't like that plan, we can vote it down. If we like that plan, we'll be able to build a more equitable town, a town that is going to be supportive for generations to come, and we're not going to land the town on the wrong side of the digital divide. Let's not put off this question for two more years, four more years, 10 more years. Let's make the decision tonight, let's vote in the affirmative, and let's give the town a chance to take the step forward. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. O'Connell. Okay, we have a motion to move the previous question to close discussion. It's a two-thirds as well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The chair says that the ayes have it by the two-thirds, and I so declare. Okay, we're going to use the slide, because this is a two-thirds vote, and it has to be by ballot. Cue up the slide. Okay, all those in favor of the main motion as printed signify by pressing 1A. All those opposed signify by pressing 2B. We're still, still voting, so press 1A if you're in favor, 2B if you're opposed. I do see some town meeting members who haven't voted yet, so. By a counted, by a ballot vote of 159 in favor and 25 opposed, I declare the two-thirds by secret ballot. Therefore, we will take a positive motion on Article 26, Mr. Chairman, for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I recommend Article 26 with an amendment, the following amendment. I propose we insert the, in the first sentence after the words, with the first election being held, add the words, "at the next municipal election." The first sentence as revised will read, "To see if the town will vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 164, Section 55, to elect a municipal light board consisting of five citizens of the town, each for a term of three years, with the first election being held at the next municipal election." The explanation of the amended recommendation is, this language allow, this language will allow the election to be held either on November 6, 2022, or at a town election in May, 2023, depending on whether town meeting approves the next Article 27.
Okay, so the main motion is basically as printed, except for it's going to be the next municipal election rather than inserting a particular date. Discussion on the motion of Article 26. Yeah, to my right. Ms. Free Tag.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Melissa Frytag, Precinct Six. Just a technical question that I had asked at our precinct meeting. In the first line, the, it says, Mass General Law, Chapter 165, Section 55, blah, blah, blah. Board consisting of five citizens of the town. Nobody here is a citizen of Falmouth. Everyone here is a citizen of the United States of America. Do we change this to five Falmouth residents? Do we, did anyone get an answer on that?
That's, yeah, this, this is a statutory language. Mr. Duffy.
Frank Duffy speaking. This language, citizen of the town, appears in this section. It's the only place I've seen it before, and Ms. Frytag has an interesting question. I read this to mean that you must be a citizen of the United States, but you also must be a resident of the town.
Would it be appropriate to suggest amending it to just reading five Falmouth residents?
No, we can't do that, because this is the language of the statute.
You, you can ask Dylan and I to change the language of, of Chapter 164. We'll look at that, because obviously this was written in like, what, the 20s or the teens?
Probably 1908, right?
So we, uh...
Okay. Yeah, please, please look into that, because we're all citizens of the United States of America. Okay.
Well, not all of, not all of us are, but the elected members here are.
Yeah, town meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Free Tag, was the speaker, Frytag, sorry. Any, any, did I see another hand in that corner? Ms. Cullinan, was it you? Oh, it was the same issue of the language. Uh, use the microphone.
Malcolm Donald, Precinct Six. Can you explain what the, what the amendment is? I understand the next...
The next municipal election would be the date, rather than filling in a blank there in the first paragraph?
So, so that would not be November, then?
So, so, no, let me, let me explain it, because it's not the reading, it's the understanding. So we have a municipal election in May. The selectmen have statutory authority to call a municipal election whenever they want to have one, a special municipal election. So if we want to do this at, let's say, September or November, the selectmen, for $10,000, by the way, that's where the money comes from, for $10,000 can call a special municipal election and can run it concurrent with a state election or a federal election. And we did it once, I don't remember what it was, but there was another ballot I had to pick up one time. And so you can do those, both of those votes when you go that day, but you're actually participating in two different elections. You're participating in the state election, and you're participating in the special municipal election. So this language allows them all to figure out when and how they want to do it, and the next article allows a petition to see if there's another way to do it, and then in the end, there'll be an election at some point, and you'll have the opportunity to vote. I don't know if I need to re-explain that, but in May, there's a regular municipal election. The selectmen can all... The next regularly annual scheduled municipal election is, is May. The, that election is closed? Nominations are closed already, I believe, right? We've already, yep, they're all set, and we're having town meeting this week, not next week, so that we can make the window for the debt exclusion questions. And so they can't go on this May's election ballot, because the ballot is closed. But this opportunity to go in November that you were asking about, it would, wouldn't be on the November ballot that you're familiar with, it would be on a special municipal ballot at an election on the same day.
Right, so if, if the amendment passes, it doesn't exclude the, the question going on the November ballot? Is that correct?
On the special municipal election ballot, on whatever day they set, they could set that date in November on the same day.
Thank you.
And, and the language that was read by the chair is the main motion. It's not, it's not an amendment, it's just the main motion. We have one motion on the floor. Mr. Cook.
I congratulate my former Falmouth Net board members. Congratulations. This is one vote, one evening, no hard feelings. But I would like to mention two, one little thing, my friend Nick. Vince Surf is a friend of mine. I've known him for 20 years. He lectured my class when I was a professor. He's not evil. Google's not evil, not in my opinion. My question is about this, for this, my question about, for this article is, just so everybody knows, I'd like to know how, what is the selection for board members? How will we get to meet them, evaluate them? Is there competition for it? I'd ever experienced one, so if somebody can enlighten me as to what the process is and who are, if are there candidates right now who are currently vying for that position? I'd just like to know.
So depending on what the vote of the next article is, where there will be a special act of legislation to allow the special municipal election, which we're not splitting hairs between the annual municipal election and a special municipal election, so the next municipal election, if the legislature, legislature allows us to have it on the same day as the state election in November, there will be, we'll have to wait for that to be passed by the legislature, and then nomination papers will be issued. Signatures will need to be correct, collected and returned and certified to be placed on that municipal election ballot, which will be a separate ballot than the state ballot. We're not allowed to add a municipal election to the state ballot, but we'd have a second ballot on the day in November as a special election and the state election on the same day. So there would be a period for nomination papers. We'd be electing five members, the first for one-year term, two-year term, three-year term, and then staggered from there on, three-year terms.
Okay, Mr., do I have your, Mr. Cook, so Mr. Keefe.
Brian Keefe, Precinct Four. I forgot my notes when I stood up. So we've had a great debate. A lot of great points have been raised. I stand in favor of moving forward with the MLP and establishing a local broadband internet service. I think the debate overall would hopefully send a strong message to the organization Falmouth Net to make some course corrections in how the community is being engaged in terms of how messaging is being formulated. There's a lot of questions that have gone unanswered. I know some of them can't be answered until we move forward with certain components, but I, I think there's, there's an opportunity to make some course corrections, and hopefully those are applied. And the second, second commentary I want to make is actually a question where Article 26 reads, for the last sentence, "The municipal light board shall have the authority to construct, purchase, or lease the municipal light plant in accordance with," et cetera. So repeatedly throughout all of this debate, we've heard the point that we are not committing any finances point forward. The way I read that particular sentence of this Article 26 is that once the municipal light board is formulated, persons are appointed to those seats. That then grants the authority to the MLP to construct, purchase, or lease. That's, that's an expense. So can, can we speak to the point of we're not committing finances yet, once Article 26 is passed and those bodies... finances yet, once Article 26 is passed, and those bodies are named to those seats? What are the breakpoints to prevent a commitment point forward?
Mr. Duffy?
Sir, the sentence reads, “In accordance with the vote of the town.” So if there’s going to be, if the town’s going to incur debt to design, build, and construct the municipal light plant or a broadband, not, well, a municipal broadband facility, they have to come before this board, and the borrowing is in accordance with the borrowing statutes that we exercise every time we borrow money. Takes a two-thirds vote at town meeting to authorize the borrowing, and Falmouth, the municipal light board will have no money unless you vote by a two-thirds vote to give it to them.
Yep. Mr. Donahue?
Bob Donahue, Precinct 3. I’d like to ask, through you, Mr. Moderator, I’d like to get the scheduling of voting in my mind, and how candidates would run. So, first of all, if we approve this, you have to take a vote in the legislature to approve the...
That’s the next one. This just allows them to have a municipal, to do this...
No, no, the voting, sir.
Yeah, but, but they can set it on a different date, if the, if we don’t do it on November. This is just saying that we’re going to have the, the ballot election thing, and it’s going to be at a municipal election.
Okay. Would we save the 10 grand on doing it the same day?
No, you got to print ballots, you got to take care of lists, you got to do whatever else you got to do.
How much time does it take to, after, would, would the, would the election for the board be next May, from, in other words, a year from this coming May, for, for that board? Would, would that be the election off the board?
We can’t make a commitment to that, because an act of the legislature has to happen if it’s going to be on the exact same day in November, so...
Well, let’s say we don’t, let’s say they...
The plan is to try to do it that way, yes. That’s the plan, but...
So, so, okay. You guys in the legislature say it’s okay. You, you give us permission to have it the same day. We have the election the same day to establish the right to have an election for the board.
No, no, that is the, that is the election.
That will be the election.
That will be the election.
Is that enough of time to have an election? That’s, that’s what...
It better be, because I still got my nomination papers. I have to be on the same ballot of the same day.
Well, yeah, but, do you understand what I’m trying to say, folks? I don’t think there’s enough of time...
They don’t understand. You’ve got months. November’s a long ways away. League of Women Voters, let’s have a beautiful candidates forum. Let’s get these folks down there, and, and make sure that the community understands the credentials of the individuals that are running, what they want to bring to the table, what their vision is for the future. Let’s put it on FCTV, and then let’s have an election. Because you overwhelmingly voted to do this, so we’re going to take a vote on putting the words “next municipal election” in the main motion here. This is to authorize pursuant to Chapter 164, 55, the election. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 27. Article 27, I’m the moderator, I control debate. Article 27, the Select Board Chairman for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 27 as printed.
Article 27 as printed. This is to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for the special act authorizing a special election on the same day of the November election. Discussion on Article 27. Mr. Hargraves?
Mr. Chairman, point of order?
What’s the point of order? What’s the point of order?
Point of order?
Yep, get the...
Last night, this had to be a ballot vote, 25, 26, and 27?
No, the ballot, the ballot vote is to elect the board.
I thought you said last night that these three items had to be...
Oh, the secret ballot. I’m sorry. You said ballot, I was, so the secret ballot was just the, under the statute, for the first article, we had to use a secret ballot. That’s state law. So the rest of these were, were vote, the normal procedure that we use at town meeting. Yep. When you said ballot, I was thinking the other ballot. Mr. Hargraves?
Thank you. These probably properly belong with the article we’ve already voted, but I think they’re relevant for whether we want to accelerate this. I had one question about the qualifications of the board. Is there anything that says whether they have to be a resident of Falmouth?
So the statutory language used in the 1920s said, “Citizen of the town of Falmouth,” if you followed any of the conversation we just had.
I did.
And I’m going to try to go back with Dylan and try to fix that language. That was the cross-conversation.
Okay.
Were you at the meeting?
Yeah.
I’m getting a little upset, okay, and I’m going to tell you why. I’m going to tell you why I’m upset. Because sometimes we win, and sometimes we lose. And how we act when we lose tells more about what we do than when we win. And so the last article was simply to set the ballot of what overwhelmingly passed on the previous article. It is what we call perfunctory and procedure. And to think that we need to have a debate because of the way the first vote went, I think is not how I have seen this body act in the past. And it’s not just you, Mr. Hargraves. There’s others that, in the last few meetings, are changing the real nature of being elected officials. And I know you’re volunteers. I know you’re not paid. I know it’s not a full-time thing. But I’ve been here for 23 and a half years, and when I see what’s happening in Washington, DC, slip into the Lawrence School auditorium, it hurts my heart. So yes, as we said during the debate, “Citizen of the town of Falmouth,” Mr. Duffy answered the question, refers to the residency requirement under statute at the time.
And I’m sorry for the misunderstanding and to cause you pain, because I was not debating it, but just seeking clarity. As my last question seeks clarity on the comment that Mr. Duffy made, that a two-thirds vote is required for any spending related to the project.
Any borrowing.
And so, I had heard from the petitioners that there’s going to be some heavy, heavy lifting required and expenses for legal help, and a part-time executive, part-time director, and that they would be coming to the town maybe in November, and would that require a two-thirds vote? Just a point of information. I’m not debating anything.
Sure, it depends what they ask for. Two-thirds is for borrowing. If they want to borrow money, it’s two-thirds vote. If they want to transfer free cash, or raise an appropriate, or take from another fund, or if it comes out of stabilization, it’s two-thirds.
Thank you.
Yep. Authorize the board of selectmen to petition the legislature. Any further discussion? Yep. Mr. Dufresne?
Thank you.
Wait, can, can we, because we...
I just have to call the question.
Okay, yep. We’re going to go. We’re going to take the vote. Mr. Dufresne’s calling, asking to call the question. Yep. So the question will come on the main motion as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it by a majority. Article 28. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the main motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 28 as printed.
The main motion is as printed, and we have a presentation, I believe, and we have someone from the balcony that was going to come down too? Is that still? Yep, okay. And she can stay down during the presentation to answer questions, if there are any, and all of that. I mean, after the presentation, until we’re done with the article.
Okay. I’ll get started now, then. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Rosemary Drager Carey, Precinct 5, and I’m here with Eleanor Ling, Precinct 1. We are co-petitioners with Michael Fogarty, David Mark Welch, Susan Richmond, and Geraldine Chad, all volunteers with the Falmouth Climate Action Network. We’re here to ask for your vote for Article 28, to create the position of a sustainability director. With this article, sorry. With this article, we’re asking town meeting to vote to create a new full-time director-level position focused on sustainability and coastal resiliency policies and programs. The position would be defined by the Select Board with input from a consultant study, for which an RFP, or Request for Proposal, is in the works. Our petition asks the Select Board to commit to certain actions during the calendar year, such as defining the roles and responsibilities, the reporting structure and compensation, and setting a specific hiring date. We are not asking for funding for the position at this time. However, we do expect that by taking these actions now, the position could be funded by FY24 and start as early as July 2023. The Select Board has recommended this article be voted as printed at its December 20, December 6 meeting, and now it’s up to us. So before we go any further, I thought it would be helpful to, to define what we mean by sustainability. Some folks have asked us that along the way. By sustainability, we’re using the UN definition, meeting our own needs without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their needs. In other words, development of our community so that all of our important decisions are made with climate impacts and stewardship of the environment in mind. So why do we need a sustainability director? Well, we know the climate crisis already poses real and dire threats to the health, safety, and economic security of this town. As citizens of the world and for our own self-preservation locally, it’s critical that we plan now for the safe, vibrant, sustainable Falmouth we hope to leave future generations. An experienced, dedicated professional would drive the sustainability and coastal resiliency agenda through the town’s strategic planning, policies, and implementation. The position would ensure that climate risks, hazards, and opportunities to address them are considered in all decisions. The position would also provide support and resources to staff and committees who’ve been directed to take action on climate, but may not have the time, expertise, capacity, or clear priorities. Addressing climate change has been a clear objective of Falmouth as a matter of policy for many years. It’s defined in our local comprehensive plan, the Climate Emergency Declaration, our Climate Protection Action Plan, our Green Communities Designation, and the Coastal Resilience Action Plan. And as of 2021, reducing greenhouse gas emissions to net zero by 2025 is required by law under the state’s Next Generation Climate Roadmap law. A dedicated sustainability director would enable us to put these policies and law into action. We petitioners did not arrive at this conclusion out of nowhere. Last spring, we began to investigate how other Massachusetts towns were addressing climate mitigation, adaptation, and resiliency in their planning and decisions. We found that at least 35 municipalities have a sustainability director or equivalent position. We reached out to nine of those towns to find out how their sustainability department is structured, how they interface with other departments, and what kinds of projects they’ve implemented. In all of our research, we found an overarching theme, that having a skilled, dedicated individual or department focused on climate is a very good investment in the town, leading to better collaboration between town departments on prioritizing climate goals, follow-through on committee recommendations, ability to secure federal and state funding, and administer green communities grant programs. Most notably, we learned that sustainability directors often bring in financial benefits many times their salary, anywhere from two times to 12 times in grants and savings to the town. As we mentioned earlier, the final job description would depend on the Select Board, the Select Board with input from the consultant study. But we have learned that sustainability directors are experienced professionals with a degree in the field of environmental studies, public policy, environmental science, or planning. They have expertise in greenhouse gas accounting, energy management, sustainable planning strategies, and the ability to wear many hats. This position is very collaborative, working with other departments in the community. So areas of responsibility would be energy efficiency and resiliency, addressing coastal resiliency issues, beginning by implementing and monitoring actions already recommended by the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee. The sustainability director would advise the Select Board, Planning Board, and Zoning Board of Appeals on bylaws to ensure climate is considered in town projects. Would conduct community education, building a culture of sustainability in our town, sharing best practices, available solutions, and financial incentives that, throughout the community. They’d also work with local schools to develop educational programs and introduce green job opportunities for youth. And last, but not least, the sustainability director would identify new sources of federal and state grants, and follow-through on implementation and reporting. When it comes to grant procurement, time is of the essence. Massachusetts is expected to receive more than $9.5 billion in federal grants in the next five years for upgrades to our transportation system, roads, and infrastructure. Several billions more will be available to states for projects, including electric vehicle infrastructure, electric school buses, bike-sharing programs, and all the towns in Massachusetts will be competing for these funds. Having a sustainability director in place will help our town secure those grants and incentives, but also demonstrate that we have the capacity to implement them, and that’s a key criteria for grant makers. So we have strong support from the community. We presented this article to numerous organizations and received their enthusiastic endorsements. We spoke to our neighbors, colleagues, and members of the community, and received overwhelmingly positive support. Many questions, but overall support. And we even have been assured that, from a regional sense, this position makes sense. We spoke to Kristi Senatori, Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission, and she said, “Addressing the critically important issues of climate change and coastal resiliency requires a dedicated effort. A sustainability director would enhance the town’s ability to pursue funding, oversee initiatives, fully access Cape Cod Commission’s extensive resources, and take action locally.” As policymakers, we cannot continue to acknowledge the climate crisis, yet fail to offer a clear roadmap for action or the necessary resources. Your yes vote tonight will allow us to take action on the climate and coastal resiliency policies and programs we urgently, urgently need. Please vote yes for Falmouth residents now and for future generations. Thank you.
Very well timed. You were right at the time. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, so... Okay, so discussion opened on Article 28 as printed. Yep, let's start. Microphone to the right.
Bob Young, Precinct 5. The Selectman just, Selectman Brown just recommended this article as printed. Says in part, "This article would require a commitment on behalf of the Select Board, A, create this position." However, then further down on the explanation, it says this article is advisory. Could somebody explain that?
We have to amend the classification plan to create a new position in town, and this doesn't do that. Mr. Duffy?
Yes, there are procedures set forth in the Charter and in bylaw to create a new position. Town meeting vote does not do it by itself. We have to go through the normal procedures first. So the Select Board is just going to start the process.
Sandra Cuny, Precinct 2. I think this position would be beneficial for the town, but I just want to let town meeting members know that last night, we talked about building a new fire station and the need for new firemen. We talked about the conservation department wanting to take a part-time person, possibly making them full-time in 2024. I can tell you that the Assistant Recreation Director has not, position has never been filled since Helen Kennedy retired and Joe Olenek took over, something the Recreation Committee has been asking for a few years. And I know that the Falmouth DPW is short-staffed with positions that need to be filled. So I just want to let you know that when you're debating the creation of another new full-time position, which I'm sure will benefit the town, keep in mind that we have a lot of positions that still yet have to be filled. So thank you.
Okay, further discussion?
Thank you. Charles McCaffery, Precinct 5, former Chair of the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee. I'll be brief. I just want to say that the recommendations that the committee made all would require professional staff to assure that they're advanced, refined, and reflect what the Select Board would want to achieve in implementing our recommendations.
Okay, further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the petitioner. I'm just curious, just having a single head of a department without a department underneath them, are you envisioning staffing this department, if you will, with all the work that has to be done? And if not, why not the option of hiring a contractor versus a full-time employee?
Well, we specifically are requesting one director-level position, full-time, and we came to that conclusion because, like you said, additional staff may be necessary. Falmouth has a lot of issues to address. So this position would get the ball rolling. And with input from the consultant study, the Select Board, and an experienced professional overseeing, you know, all sustainability measures and working within departments as a partner and collaborator, then I have every confidence that our town management can build out the, whatever, you know, additional positions may or may not be needed. Right now, this is one position that gets the ball rolling.
Thank you. I guess the question I have might be to the Select Board, have we ever hired contractors to go and attempt to get grant funds?
We have worked with consultants that have assisted us in securing grant funds from time to time, but not as a general, overall, not as a general, single principle.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Braga?
I think to Mr. Smolowicz, very good question. I think the idea here is to recognize that we just had the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee put in an enormous amount of work, generate some really incredible data recommendations that, if I'm being very candid, will sit on a shelf if there isn't someone to shepherd them through. Over the years, we've had many really great studies, and this is such an enormous undertaking, and it's so interdisciplinary. This is going to touch on many different departments, and the idea of this individual is that they would be coordinating. So maybe it starts off as an individual who's really coordinating with DPW, with Beach Committee, you know, with Town Planner, with Engineering, because this subject matter is going to cross all of those departments. And so in order for us to make some headway and not just have a study that we love and we look at, and then we have to ask somebody else to redo it in five years, you know, I think that, I'll speak for myself, but the conversations that the board had was that the time was really ripe because this study had been done for this to, you know, for the two things to dovetail together.
And then, no, Ms. Leonardi and then Mr. Dufresne. There's one before you.
Amy Leonardi, Precinct 8. Just a minor point of clarification, because I've seen it come up twice in town meeting tonight. The town of Falmouth does not own all their buses. I just saw it again in your presentation. We actually subcontract those out to a company.
Mr. Dufresne?
Adrian Dufresne, Precinct 2. I've been a town meeting member for a lot of years. A petition article by a nice group of people brings, we just heard a department head talk about all the unfilled positions that we're trying to fill within the current budget. It looks to me like this would be probably another $75,000 or $100,000 a year person. It currently takes approximately three-quarters of a million dollars just to run the corner office of Town Hall. I can't remember exactly how many positions are vacant right now, because we have not fulfilled the need in the current positions that were vacated through attrition. I have a hard time, 50 years I've been coming to this room, and a petition article at this particular time without the information that would really be needed is the qualifications of the man who's being proposed. I don't know where the hell, where we put him in Town Hall. We'd have to build a whole new section to hold this man with this qualification.
Or a woman.
I ask, please, vote this down.
Okay, I've got Mr. Brown and then Mr. Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So we had, as Mr. McCaffery mentioned, we did have the Coastal Resiliency Action Report already in hand, which did indicate the need for professional staff addition just to manage the coastal resiliency aspect of it. And there's some folks in town, including people on the Planning Board, who think that that is a job unto itself. The Sustainability Coordinator as well could very well be a job unto itself, and we're going to try to hybrid the two together just to at least get a start of a handle on these big issues. The coastal resiliency, it's an important thing that we're not really doing a lot with, and there's nobody really on hand. Are we going to use consultants forever to advise us? We've done that in the past, but it only goes so far if you don't have somebody actually working on it full-time. So I believe in it. I know you've got a lot of employees, but I think this is a job that could pay back as well.
Mr. Patterson? And then Mr. Rafferty?
Just, I wanted to mention that—
I'll put you back on the list.
In one of my previous careers, I was a program manager for the Gould Incorporated Corporation, a very large corporation and an installation where we had 5,000 employees. But it was my responsibility as a program manager to coordinate the input from all of the various departments to get that contract completed. It was a landmine detection system that uses multi-sensor detection. It was complicated in all kinds of signal processing. But I was the key person, the single point of contact, for making sure that that program got executed by the corporation. I see this Sustainability Director to be that kind of a person, where they're coordinating the inputs from the various departments to make sure that the project that assures some kind of continuing coastal resiliency actually gets completed. It takes coordination, takes time and dedication, and it's probably multiple projects and not just simply one. But there's an example of where corporations use exactly that kind of a person to make sure there's enough focus among all the departments to contribute what they can to actually execute a particular project.
Thank you. Steve Rafferty, Precinct 2. I'd like to propose an amendment that will provide a little flexibility to the Selectman. The first line reads, "To ask the town to vote to create a new full-time position of Sustainability Director or a similar director-level position." I would like, in the end of the sentence, to strike the phrase, by my amendment, "the director-level position," or such that we'll read, "or a similar position." Because if in the second paragraph, it asks that the Selectman retain a professional consultant to help guide them through this process, I think the issue might be—
Do you think we really need the amendment? Because it's non-binding. It's advisory.
Well, okay, okay. I just, maybe I'm making a point here that—
Yeah.
—as they go forward, this is a great position, but where it sits in the hierarchy and who it reports to and everything else should not be tied down by this vote. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, it'll be tied down by a position classification vote that a future town meeting would take.
Fine, fine. Then I'm fine.
Yep, yep, good. Okay, Mr. Dufresne? And then Ms. Schneider?
I'd like to repeat everything that I just said about this position. We can't afford it. We have vacant positions in every department now. Please, vote this one down. Let's think about it for another session later on. Let them come up with a better proposal. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't see her coming. I'm going to disagree with Andy. I took time several months ago to attend a presentation by the person who is this position for Woods Hole Oceanographic. It was an eye-opener. It gave a summary of what's been accomplished in only a few years by this one person initiating projects that could save energy, money, and finding the money to go after them and get them done and making sure they get done. It was spectacular, and many, many times over, this person's salary was saved by what she's been able to do. So I wish all of you would have had a chance to hear her speak. It was wonderful. Last night, we mentioned in the beach report that we are planning to do a real study and look at what we need to do to sustain our beaches. We actually hope that we would have a lot of data to hand over to this person when they come on board so that they could start the ball rolling for doing something to save our beaches. And just because we have positions that are not filled, that's really up to the front office to get those filled and to find the people and to find the price point we need to offer to get them done. It doesn't have anything to do with whether or not we need this position. We need this position.
Deborah Siegel, Precinct 6. There is a level of complexity to the climate crisis that we cannot expect volunteer committees to handle by themselves. They've, some of them have done a wonderful job, and they need help. The rest of the departments need help. We can't afford not to do this right now, and I ask you to approve this article. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Taylor?
Actually, Ms. Siegel just took my words. I was going to say, regarding Mr. Dufresne's comment, we cannot afford to not push this position forward, given our climate crisis.
Okay, Ms. Rhodes? No, you're all set. Okay.
Ralph Herbst, Precinct 8. I'd like to ask the Finance Director, are all of the open positions that the town has currently in all departments, are their salaries already in the budget? All of the people, all of the open positions that we have in all the departments of the town, are their salaries already in the budget?
Yeah, I mean, we have open positions where their salaries are on the budget, where we haven't hired yet. But I think that's what you're asking, right? I mean, we do have open positions—
I'm saying, I'm saying—
—and the salaries are in the budget.
The budget, we already passed.
Yeah.
Didn't we authorize the salaries for all of the people that are, all of the positions that are still unfilled?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Dufresne? I'm sorry, but it's not going to cost the town any more money than, I mean, eliminating any of the open positions that are on the books.
Ms. Carey?
Yes, I think we heard last night from Ms. Mullen that many of the positions are being filled and expect to be filled by FY24. So this position would not really compete with others that need to be filled. And also, I would just like to mention that without someone really keeping an eye out for these issues, grant opportunities or programs with the Cape Cod Commission, we're missing out. And the cost of missing out on these programs, like the low-lying roads program offered by the Cape Cod Commission, even green communities, we receive the grants, but that takes a lot of work and implementation. And coastal resiliency recommendations by the committee have not been acted on yet, and this position would get those things going and make sure we don't miss out on opportunities to save our town money and to have a more safe and vibrant community. And one last point, we had a lot of discussion last night about public safety and how important that is to our town, but addressing climate risk is a health and safety issue, and that's another, you know, very compelling reason to have a Sustainability Director.
Bob Donahue, Precinct 3. This sounds to me, from what everyone has been saying, and I'm in favor of this, that really, we need a department, not just one individual. We need a secretary. We need an assistant for this person. That's what you would do if you were in business. We're a hundred and, what is it, $126 million business, and we're hiring one person to coordinate with all the different departments. What if that person, after the 90-day, is it 90 days you're here on probation and then you're a full-time employee? What if they get sick at the end of the 90 days and they're out for a month or two? Do we, do we just close up shop? We, I just, all I'm saying is, I will vote for— We, I just, all I'm saying is, I will vote for this, but I think it should have been brought in a more broader base to us. There should be three positions, not one. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Baker, or the gentleman behind Mr. Baker first. I saw his hand earlier. Okay. We have a question to move the previous question to close discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Shares that the ayes have it by the two-thirds, and I so declare the question will come on the main motion as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It's printed that shares that the ayes have it by a majority. Article 33, this is a community preservation article. Where's the community preservation chair? Where's the chair of the CPC? We're going to get a microphone in my right place for the...
Article 33, Sandra Cuney, Vice Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. Article 33 was held just to change the amount in the recommendation from $75,000 to $25,000.
Okay.
And I'll move the article as recommended.
So the new recommendation is $25,000 for Article 33. Any discussion on Article 33? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by a majority. Mr. Chair of the Finance Committee for a notification of how much we spent at this town meeting?
Mr. Moderator, we have appropriated, this body has appropriated $188,982,33.
Okay, that's the total for all the articles. Mr. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for notification of the next town meeting.
I believe we chose, was it, okay, excuse me, November 14th.
Okay, November 14th. Hopefully, the world keeps going in the direction it is with the pandemic, and we'll be able to be back here at 7 o'clock on November 14th for the Fall Annual Town Meeting. Chair Lintertain, a motion to dissolve the meeting? So moved. All those in favor of dissolving the meeting signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Don't forget to drop your clickers off on the way out.
Falmouth Community Television's coverage of town meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction, maintenance, to site work, for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs. 508-548-0911.
Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, a family-run art gallery and real estate agency located on Main Street in Falmouth, focusing on local and regional fine art. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, 774-763-5441.
The Attorneys at Oppenheim &amp; Nickerson, LLP, have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
Barrett Plumbing and Heating offers expert plumbing, heating, and air conditioning services to all our residential and commercial customers on Cape Cod and surrounding area. We are a full-service plumbing specialist, offering professional workmanship to suit your budget. Whatever your heating or plumbing need, you can always count on a job that's done right.
Hamilton Tree and Landscaping has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Located on Route 151, we're available for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto, as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
At A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
BSS Design has been providing civil engineering, land surveying, and permitting services throughout Cape Cod and southeastern Massachusetts since 1987. BSS Design, 508-540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street Downtown Falmouth.
Eastmans has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913, with a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessories and gourmet foods. Our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs. 508-548-0407.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Simply Hearing, Audiology and Hearing Aid Center, 508-548-8123. SimplyHearing.net.
Grossi Septic Solutions, 508-548-7500.
J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road, 508-539-3888.
The Annie Hart Cool Team, 508-868-0664.
Dalpe Excavation Incorporated, 508-548-9788. Info@dalpeexcavation.com.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop, 508-274-2057.
Nobbska Lighthouse and Maritime Museum, friendsofnobbska.org.
People for Cats, 44 Beagle Lane, T-Ticket, Mass. Info@peopleforcats.org.
Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank in Falmouth and Woods Hole, 508-627-4266.
The Falmouth EDIC, falmouthedic.org, 508-548-7440.
Partners Technology, Voice and Data Solutions, 781-930-5000.
Wacoite Congregational Church, 508-548-5269.
Sora's Flower Garden Nursery, 508-548-5288.
M. Duffney Builders, 508-540-3625.
Danny's Barber Shop, 508-548-6013.
David Rogers Electric, 508-274-2057.
Murray and McDonald Insurance, 1-800-800-8990.
Chapman Funerals and Cremations, 508-540-4172.
Hanush Jewelers in Downtown Falmouth, 508-548-9107.
Mahoney's Garden Center, 508-548-4842.
The Cape Cod Five, 508-457-5252.
Ed Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More, 508-457-9454.
Additional support provided by Stop &amp; Shop Windfall.